All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the July 9th, 2025 regular council meeting. Call the being in order. And will you please join me in the Pledge of Legions?
Pledge of Legions to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, will you please take your role?
Councilmember Douglas.
Present.
Councilmember Hilberg.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem McCully.
Here.
Mayor Loman.
Here. And can I get a motion to approve the agenda order?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Without the closed session.
Thank you.
Second.
I second.
Okay. All in favor? One E conflict interest. Do we have any new conflict interests from the council?
Sir?
No? All right. Move on to the consent calendar. All items of the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one blanket motion with council vote unless a council member or member of the public requests an item be pulled from consent for discussion. This poll will be addressed after the council completes consent calendar vote and will require a separate motion. Are there any items that the council or public would like to pull from the consent calendar? Uh, saying none. Can I get a motion to approve the consent?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi, hi, hi.
You. All right, agency reports. Bosh County Sheriff.
Good evening. How's everybody doing today?
Great.
Thank you. Sergeant Toby Williams, Bosh County Sheriff's Office. Uh, month of June was a good month overall. Uh, in comparison to May, we're, uh, down in the number of incidents that we've, uh, responded to, uh, reports taken suspicious calls, things of that nature. Probably what's, uh, most beneficial is, uh, we reduced the number of transient related activity calls down by half. Sixteen in the month of May, eight, uh, last month. Um, and our traffic stops are up from the mid thirties from May to forty six this last month. So trying to be a little bit more proactive, uh, saying hi to people who, um, may or may not like to drive nicely. Um, see, we had, uh, nine arrests last month compared to ten in May, so tracking about the same. Uh, obviously, the, the big, uh, hoopla of the last few weeks was the third of July. Uh, Ms. McCully said that between, what's six thousand-ish was an estimate? So lots of. Okay. So definitely lots of folks, um, went pretty well without a hitch. Uh, the, uh, the parade. A lot of people like to kind of encroach upon the parade route, so we had some, uh, traffic issues that we had to deal with. Uh, and we had a, uh, a fight at the very, very end, um, in town, uh, none of which were related to Colfax residents. They were all out of towners who decided to, um, have their own little get together. So we're, uh, identifying certain suspects. I don't know if any arrests are going to be made. Um, the people that we contacted weren't very cooperative, uh, those that were injured, which is shocking, I know, but, um, at least we do have a, an idea of who, who some of the major players are, and we'll see what we can do in terms of if there's any prosecution to be done. Oh, um, I think that's about it. Uh, my, uh, my deputies hit a known problem house. We got two more, uh, two more arrests out of there just this morning. So, um, I think that's about it. Anybody has any questions? Yes, sir.
Does Sheriff's Office coordinate with the operators that go up there because they have a bunch of motorbikes out there pulling wheelies and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Got me really close to that. They're just, they're just.
So part of, part of the issues, uh, is that the parade's not, uh, vetted. It's just kind of like, hey, who's in the parade? And then some folks come in later, to my understanding. So, um, it's, it's something that we're going to have to coordinate with, uh, the Lions Club and, uh, actually try to maybe make, uh, some kind of a registration process. People out that don't need to be there, uh, but.
Roughly how many people were in the fight? Just a few or, uh, ten, twenty?
Uh, late teens, roughly what, I don't know. I'd say a dozen, twelve to twenty. So they were from Grass Valley and Rancho Cordova. Kind of random, but yeah, but no, no locals at all.
It's my. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Who won Rancho Cordova?
Sheriff.
Yeah. The, uh, the only two that were there, their friends left them behind. One was from each group, so, and they were suffering worse for wear, so. Anything else?
Uh, head-on collusion on the freeway. Last time you said.
Uh, I have no idea. CHP is in charge of the investigation on that, uh, but I haven't heard anything from our coroner's office for that.
All right. Thank you very much.
No problem.
It's Brian Sullivan.
I know. Yeah, no CHP tonight, no Cal Fire. Yeah, they're on a fire in Auburn. Um, so nonprofits. Aaron? Thanks for coming.
Hi, my name is Erin Newington. I'm representing the Downtown Association tonight. Um, I have been working very hard on a multi-year grant that would bring quite a bit of money to Colfax for over a three-year period, and I just wanted to publicly thank Ron for such, uh, writing a beautiful letter that was very supportive and, you know, grants are all about building evidence why they should bring money to Colfax, and it really helped. Um, same with Sean. He wrote a beautiful letter as well, and I just think that there's so much money out there to be had, and it's really encouraging to have an area that has ability and so much, um, need, and it really. Armored, um, uh, multiple, um, music production companies that are willing to jump in should we get this grant. Um, it is a multi-stage grant. So phase one is what we've already completed and it's been accepted. Um, phase two would be a public vote, so hopefully I will be back asking for some support from the community to see if we can rally the troops and, um, put Colfax on the map for this particular program. We've also been working on, um, our visit historic Colfax platform. Um, if you didn't know, we have a, a, a website that's designed to promote our community events, let people know what's going on in town. Um, and overall tell our general story about what's going on with Colfax and what direction we are moving forward. Uh, we also have a Facebook page and Instagram account. Uh, posts go out pretty much every day, um, all geared towards, um, tourism and just letting people know what, everything that is to offer here in Colfax. Um, also, uh, promoting everybody's events and making sure that, um, we get put on the map. We've also been working on multiple events. One of them is, um, I'm also a board member of the chamber, and so I just wanted to plug that event when I'm up here really quick. Um, it's an Indian dinner. It is coming on, um, August first. Uh, it's going to be at the community center, so Paul over at the Colfax Market is going to be cooking up some great food with his family, and, um, it's a fifteen-dollar entry fee. There is tickets for, um, families as well. So it's a really good deal, and we would love, um, to have you come on down. Um, on the Historic Downtown Association side, we also have a Colfax Bazaar that we're working on with Todd over at the Fruit Building. Um, we are super excited. We have multiple vendors that are already signed up. Um, it is, uh, expected to have quite a bit of attendance. Um, and so we're super excited to bring a new event to Colfax. Um, in addition, we are committed to working on the Oktoberfest. Um, the Chamber had decided that they wanted to focus on their, um, business members, and so we, um, are working with a lot of their board members uh, to go ahead and move that forward under the Downtown Historic Association, um, name. In addition, I've been working on, um, I've spoke with several of you about the need for filling our vacancies in town, and so one of the things that we've been working on is itemizing that list. What does that look like? Which buildings are available? What's the best usage for them? What buildings are for sale? Um, and so we're building a map on our website that basically lists all of the properties that are for lease, and as I find them and, um, get the information, we're listing them on that map so that we can have one local place for, um, business owners, um, or potential business owners to want to relocate to our area and, um, or somebody who might want to invest in our area because, um, there's a lot of buildings that are for sale right now on Main Street, and I don't know of another area that you could come in and buy. One of the commercial buildings is under three hundred thousand. Where are you going to get a historic building on a main street for that kind of price? So from a real estate perspective, um, it's a really good buy for someone, um, who would want to possibly relocate and build a business in Colfax. Um, I see. Is that it? I think that's it. Oh, and in addition to mapping out, um, both properties for sale and for lease, we're working on a packet that we can specifically go out to businesses outside of the area, um, and try and, uh, encourage them like Colfax is the place for them to come and invest. Um, and, uh, that's something that we're actively putting together now. So I think that, that is it.
Hey, thank you so much, Aaron. Uh, do we have any other non-pro, nonprofits tonight? All right. And, uh, we'll move on to item four presentations tonight. Uh, Harry Anderson will be doing a presentation on professional marketing. Come on up, Harry.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks. Thanks to the Sheriff's Department. I'm with him. I'd like to know who won that deal, but yeah. Anyway, what I'm in hopes to tonight is to present to you, uh, a little bit of history and a little bit of, uh, a solution. Colfax has reached the breaking point. It's a mere shell of its former self in all respects. When I arrived here in Colfax in nineteen eighty-six, it was home to the largest Exxon distributor west of the Mississippi. Tom Sierra Company had a hundred and forty-nine gas stations. Tom Sierra also owned and operated the Tire Retail Center here, which is where the Plaza Tire was, and it's now the Big Brand Tire Company. And that was known as Tom Sierra Tire. Tom Sierra Company was headquartered behind Matty's, uh, Mexicali Stop, that two-story building there, and they employed a lot of people. The Colfax High School was fairly new building just then, located just out of town. And the old historic hotel was empty when I got here in nineteen eighty-six, just like it is today. As the territory manager for the Michelin Tire Corporation, I covered from Winnemucca, Nevada to Davis, California, and from Redding to Stockton. Colfax was the center of my territory. When I was asked where I lived by my customer base, I would tell them I live in Colfax. And they typically replied, you mean that weird little town with the McDonald's off I-80? We had a huge paper producing company then called Tully Wur. They had two locations here in Colfax. They're now empty. Winter Chevrolet was here when I got here in nineteen eighty-six. When I arrived here, there were seven restaurants and seven bars, and they were all doing very well. Uh, my thirty-nine years of living here, I have never seen Colfax as destitute as it is now. And historic downtown is the worst it has ever been in that timeframe of thirty-nine years. The one thing that has been constant in the Colfax is the lack of proper representation of historic downtown Colfax. It has been the problem the entire time I've lived here. Because of the vastness of my territory, I saw many a small town, and in some, in some a state of decline like Colfax is now, and some that had reinvented themselves and recaptured, uh, marketing by, uh, effectively, uh, going through their historic beginnings. A prime example of a small town that not only to this day maintains its small town image, but maintains an old-time image look in its Highway Forty drive-through centerpiece, Loomis. Loomis has restaurants and small shops that are and customers. Not, uh, Loomis is memorable. You can drive through there and you see picturesque things that stay in your mind. Colfax is not memorable. Colfax has become forgotten. It's forgettable. What historic value we have here is downplayed to a point of non-existence to the near forty-five thousand vehicles that drive through the center of this town every week. Even though Colfax is the site of the Transcontinental Railroads coming together here, and it's named after a Vice President of the United States, Schuler Colfax, which town seems, except for his statue, and there's only one other statue in the United States of him, is somewhere in Pennsylvania. All this brings me to a point tonight of presenting a possible and partial solution to change Colfax to be memorable again. I'm very proud and honored to present a distinct provider of memorable signage that can take Colfax on a new beginning of a rebirth plan to make Colfax memorable again. Very pleased to present the back to the drawing board sign company. And hopefully this little stick works, honey. Let's see. Okay, let's see. Uh, you're on. Go ahead. Okay. This is one of their projects that they've done. Uh, it's quite unique. It's very, it's hard to see in that, that shadow, but that is a three-dimensional building artwork. You go to the next one? That's part of one of the, uh, pieces inside that they built. The next one? Uh, that's the beginning of the next photo that was installed in a bagel factory. Looks pretty darn real. Next one? There it is, mounted on the building. And that one is a mural of dolphins that, uh, those are separate panels that you go to the next slide. There they are creating it. And then they affixed all those to the building. Next slide? There is the beginning, uh, a, an artwork rendering that's turned into partial completion, and now go to the next one. And there's almost done, and the next one, there it is installed. Next one? Uh, comical fish and, uh, fish and chips. There's Ike's Sandwich Place. Next one, and there is the donut shop that we lost out on. That is an Old Town Sacramento. Uh, the next one? There's a life-size and that tells you how big it is. And there they are making ice cream cones. And there she is, one of the partners, standing next to one, and the next slide? And now the next slide. And there they are installed. So these are things that have become very memorable and iconic to these businesses. Look at the detail on that stuff. As hard as it is to see in that type of a picture, it's, it's phenomenal what they do. And the next one? We recognize that name? That was for the Nevada City location. And, uh, interestingly enough, uh, the city, the city over there had some requirements. Uh, apparently they're very green earth people. They wanted the sign to be made out of wood because they were concerned that if something ever happened to the business and they were to throw that sign away, if it wasn't wood, it was anything else, it would never decompose in the recycle landfill. So what they did was they made one out of wood, and the one that was on the riverside was made out of synthetic, and you couldn't tell the difference. They're that good. So, uh, anyway, um, what I, any questions? I think that's the last one, isn't it? Yeah, there it is, another one on the building. That's the one on the river. You can't tell the difference. Um, any questions so far? Um, what, what I am hoping and encouraging the members of the city council to do tonight is to not make any decisions on the signage at the roundabout until after the next. And the reason for that is so that back to the drawing board of what they would recommend to be iconic when people get off the freeway. Um, that exit, I, I think it says fifteen miles an hour? But probably the average is twenty to twenty-five miles an hour at real time when people come off that freeway. You have about seven seconds to make an impression. And having a story of Gone with the Wind up there and hoping that somebody's going to take the time to read all that, not going to happen. Not going to happen. A side note to coming off the freeway eastbound. You know, when the, for those of you that remember the Browns, the Brown family, when they, they owned the liquor store there with the Greyhound stops and all that, okay, they were there forever. Um, Carrie Brown, she looked like one of the Jackson Five, only about thirty-five years older. She had the little hat and all this stuff. She was a character. She ran that place, and that thing was spotless. Have you guys seen the weeds when you come off the freeway? They're as tall as I am. What first impression does that tell people when they come off the freeway to this town? It's pathetic. And then where we have the roundabout, there's a, a for-lease sign that you can barely see because the weeds there are sky-high. And what I don't understand is, I understand that there's a concern about businesses, you know, and they're empty and da-da-da-da-da, but a potential coming into town, image is everything, people. And what does that send when you first come into town and you see that? When the, uh, third of July banner went up at Mountain Village? I'm not a landscape guy or a gardener. I'm not, my name ain't Jose, but I know what a weed whacker is and a trimmer. And I trimmed the bushes off the sidewalk, weed-whacked in front of that business so that when I put the sign up, it wouldn't get poked holes in by the bushes that were growing all over. And there were people walking down that street and said, thank you. Because they walked down with their dog and they crossed the intersection and they go to Starbucks. So, you know, I was just going through my portfolio before I got up here, and this is, this is actually what the Drawing Board Company did a long time ago. We actually have one of these signs very close to where Caroline lives on one seventy-four. And on the back of this thing, I found and I went, oh my God, I can't believe this. Vision statement and organizational core values, city of Colfax. Amendment. Resolution number. It said, the city of Colfax seeks to preserve a healthy, stable, and local economy while embracing its rich heritage. Our city values. I apologize. It's hard for me to see. Our city values friendly neighborhoods, good schools, and community organizations, which help create a distinctive town in which to live and work. We value our historic architecture, rich rail history, standard recreational opportunities and natural resources that enhance the quality of life in Colfax. The city will continue to provide a positive plan for growth, infrastructure, open space, and alternative transportation opportunities for its citizens. The city of Colfax will govern in a proactive manner, ensuring the delivery of essential health and safety services. We are confident we can meet the challenges of responsible growth in the future. City of Colfax organizational core values adopted on resolution oh-four dash twenty seventeen. Initiative, a taking independent action and/or creating opportunities to get the job done and prevent or resolve problems. Respecting differences is understanding of the differences others bring as well as seeking and valuing others' input. Accepting responsibility in holding oneself accountable for one's work or actions and striving for continuous improvement of the city's overall effectiveness. Service motivation is committed to serve the public and to meet the needs of customers, fellow employees, and the city. It means focusing one's efforts on finding out and meeting the needs of others, shares information openly. Adaptability, last one. Is the adaptability, excuse me, is the ability and willingness to adapt to work and effectively work in light of new information, changing situations, and/or different environments. Apparently it was important to somebody back then that they created that resolution. So I applaud everybody's efforts. I'm not, I after thirty-nine years of living here is can we please get off the dime, get over the egos, and get the job done? You're all capable. This is not rocket science, but we've got to get moving. And in an economy where we're going to be fighting for dollars, it's going to get worse, people. If you haven't lived through it, you're in for one hell of a ride coming. History repeats itself, and we're, as Ron talked the other day, we're right on the threshold of it. Property values are going down. Restaurants that have opened in Auburn, they're commenting on their fighting for customer dollars because there's only a limited amount of people with money. So, anyway, that's all I got to say. I'm hoping that next week, uh, when they make their presentation on what they have found here, they walked the entire town, looked at everything, came up with an opinion of what they could present, and they're going to do it at the next city council meeting. So, thank you.
Hey, Harry. Any questions? Counsel? No questions? All right, then we'll move on to item five, uh, our public hearing. We do have one public hearing item tonight. It's, uh, updated the city's ADU ordinance. Uh, city planner, will you please introduce this item?
Good evening. I'm Kathy Pease, uh, planning consultant to the city of Colfax. Um, the item before you tonight is an update of our accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So when the, uh, city did their comprehensive zoning code update in twenty twenty-three, part of that was to adopt this accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Next slide? So interestingly, I'm not sure why, but the state, um, Housing and Community Development Department contacted us and asked us to repeal our ordinance. Um, they didn't tell us what they felt was inconsistent, but they have recently adopted a model ordinance, and so they, in speaking with them, recommended that we repeal our ordinance and update their, uh, model ordinance. So what's before you this evening is a request to repeal the existing ordinance and update one that's, um, substantially consistent with their model ordinance. So, uh, kind of back, backtracking for those that are aware, an accessory dwelling unit is a second unit, typically, uh, less than seven hundred and fifty square feet. It can be standalone on a single-family property, or it can be what's called or it can be what's called a junior accessory dwelling unit or ADU. That's when you would convert a room or a garage in an existing residence. So the intent of the state is to make it easier for folks to construct. Some of the things are it expands the definition. It requires the building department to process a request for a building permit for an ADU within sixty days. One item I did want to point out to the council and ask for your direction is on seventeen one nine eight six one twenty for rental of ADUs. I did double check the way the model ordinance was written. It sounded like it by law, you were not allowed to have a ADU rented for less than thirty days. But I checked the wording of the actual law and it says that's discretionary on behalf of the city. So what I'd like your input on is whether we make that change. It's on, it's on page four of the ordinance at the bottom. It's, sorry. Seventeen one nine six point zero seven zero rental and sales limitations. Other provisions, it, we don't have a significant impact fees, but this ordinance or the state law does limit what cities can charge for impact fees for these units. It adds language allowing one standalone ADU and one conversion of a junior ADU per single family residential lots. Multiple ADUs can be allowed within multifamily dwelling, dwellings. And like all things to the city has limited ability to require. In a nutshell, what this ordinance is doing. So it's recommending that you introduce the proposed ordinance by title only, conduct a public hearing, waive the first reading and schedule the second reading and adoption at the next regular meeting, which would be July twenty-third. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I'll go ahead and thank you, Kathy. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Yep, now's the time.
So the way the model ordinance that the state is proposing, it says that ADUs cannot be rented for less than thirty days. But the actual law, state law says that that's up to the discretion of the city. So the city doesn't have to limit it to greater than thirty days, if that makes sense. It could be allowed if, yeah, we could amend this proposed ordinance to take that part out. A single family home, so any, any one home on a single family lot is considered a single family residential unit. No, I mean, we have standard lots all over the city, so this would allow, so state law allows you to construct a second unit with only four feet side setbacks and ten feet rear. So if you have a big enough yard, you would be able to build one. Yes, yeah. Did I see?
All right, any other questions from the public? Yes? You don't have to, we can. I think that's going to be part of our discussion, so we'll get into that and just, no, you're good. No, that's a great question. So that's, I think that's going to be the biggest discussion right now. So we'll, we'll talk about that as soon as I close that. Any other questions? That's what, right now, the public hearing's open. Yeah, yep. Sorry, yeah, the public hearing is open. Now's your time to comment on this item.
Tom Barnum, city resident. And when I'm hearing short-term rental, I'm thinking Airbnb. Basically, right? Well, if we're trying to get tourists to come to town, then Airbnb, people that go there tend to go out and eat and everything and you know, that's what we're trying to do is help our businesses. I would, you know, consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, please. That's what this time's for.
Okay. I, I just have a perspective on the Airbnb. I know there's a lot of cities that don't want them in their town. And, and I get it because what happens is you have out of area people coming in, buying houses. They're not monitoring the houses. And the people are coming in and they're partying or they're wreaking havoc and there's nobody on site to actually supervise it. There is usually an off-site manager that comes in and cleans and turns the unit, but as far as having someone directly on the property monitoring what might be occurring during that rental, that, that's usually the, the point of concern. And so when I look at it from an ADU perspective, that person is on site. They do, are more than likely living there on the lot. And are supervising what's occurring. And I do agree as well that, excuse me, short-term rentals do bring in visitors. And when the hotel, as surprising as it is, I know that when it first went in, kind of our, as a resident, our perspective was that's never going to get rented. But if you've ever been there on a weekend and you drive by, it's full and it's usually overbooked. And so having those other options, especially for big events like third of July and having people have an option when they come to town is wonderful.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on, won't it?
I like to follow, Harry Anderson, I like to follow the news. And to follow up what we were talking about the other day at the counter, Ron, you know, about how real estate's in recline. They were talking about the ten worst cities in California. They're going backwards right now. And one of the things they talked about that were going backwards that a lot of investors are having a problem with were those ADU things. There, nobody's renting them. So now they're stuck with the property. So are we coming, are we coming at this thing a little bit late? When we're going to go great guns and let's do this and then there's nobody to come? That's, that's just kind of what I'm, based on what I heard, that seems kind of like what's.
Well, we have the AD ordinance already. We're just, we gotta make changes because the state wants to dictate what we do. So we're changing it. We don't have, we don't have much of a choice. So is there any other, other comment? Nothing online? All right, then I will, this is public hearing. And bring it back to council for comments. Kim? Got anything? Sorry. Larry, any comments?
Yeah, I, I believe that the purpose for an ADU is what it says, additional dwelling unit. I think the intention is for more rentable property in the state of California. And they kind of took it out of our hands, right? That law came down. We didn't have anything we could say about it. I personally think that we should not allow people to use those for an additional, excuse me, for an Airbnb or something of the like. You, for example, is a tiny house on the back end of your property. Or it could be in your garage. It could be almost than thirty days is, is just not the right intention and it wouldn't help anybody here, you know? One of the reasons we're short of rentals is that there are a lot of Airbnbs. And all we're doing now would be to allow an additional dwelling unit to be an Airbnb and just compound the problem rather than solve anything. Anyway, that's, that's my two cents.
Caroline?
Kathy, I have a couple of questions for you, please. One of the things you mentioned in the beginning was that they wanted to make it so that it's a sixty days or less approval on the permits. What is your average time now that it takes to approve a building permit?
I think given how many we get a year, that's absolutely doable. We processed two last year, so we haven't had a run on them. So, yeah.
But you do lots of other things too. So I was just curious kind of what the timeframe. Okay. I don't know if you'll know this answer, you may. When we approved the short-term rentals, how many people did we have come in and actually apply for the permits for them? Because we know there's more out there than what got permitted, but we do have a short-term rental ordinance now, so we do have them and encourage them.
Yes.
How many do you think we got?
I hate to say, we only had two that came in and went through the process. We sent out letters that we were able to track down about eight. So the thing with Airbnb and VRBO is that they advertise, but they don't tell you the address until you make your reservation. So staff I kind of asked all the staff, I'm like, here's a picture, you know, can we track this down? So we tracked down eight addresses. We sent them letters. We said, hey, you need to come in. We found one person that had built an accessory dwelling without a building permit. So we said, hey, in addition, you need to come get a building permit. They never responded. They didn't get a business license at all. So we are having a hard time getting them to respond. So we do have two good players. And then about eight other units that we're aware of in the, in the city that we're still trying to track down.
Okay. And if I recall correctly, on, in that ordinance, there of course doesn't have to be somebody living on site, but they have to have a twenty-four hour phone number.
Exactly.
And so for an accessory dwelling unit, what would have to be done to make sure that there's still a primary residence, resident there in addition to whoever's staying in the ADU? I mean, is there to make sure that it doesn't turn into just an Airbnb type situation?
So there's nothing, the way ADUs are set up, it does lend itself to be owner occupied of the the primary unit. So there is an intention that the owner occupant is on site and then they're renting out that ADU. So we don't have a provision stating that it has to be owner occupied. But I think the new state law with this says that it does have to be owner occupied.
I mean, that would make sure that the whole place isn't being turned into the short-term rental.
I think our ordinance says you can only have one short-term rental per lot anyway.
Okay. So in theory, they could have an ADU and a short-term rental? Could they have both on the same lot?
If the primary is your short-term rental, yes.
Okay. Just trying to picture all the ways it can get manipulated. Because I do agree with Larry that one of the challenges that California has and what the intention was that we need some, you know, rentals for people to live in. And we do know there's quite a few communities where the short-term rentals have priced people out of being able to actually make a home there. So you want to encourage people to come and visit your community, but I want people to live here, not just be tourists. So it, it, some of these changes sound like they're more trying to let you be that, you know, short-term rental, but put it under the ADU.
So I think the, the the model ordinance slipped that language in to say that short-term rentals are not allowed by ADUs to get to the point where they're trying to make them long-term rentals and make them affordable.
Okay. That's all I can think of, right?
And then going back to the sixty-day question that you had, luckily in Colfax, it's not a big impact on the workload. But that is state law, so our hands are tied. We have to process it within sixty days. Otherwise, their building permit is deemed approved automatically.
All right, thank you. All right, then for direction, can I get a informal vote on whether or not we should allow the ADUs? What say you, Kim?
Just restate my opinion simply, I think.
I'm letting Kim go and then, yes, sorry.
If we find out that this is being misused, which is what you two are trying to guard against, which is what we need to be aware. Is there a sunset clause or a way we can say this didn't work out, we're going to go back?
Yeah, we just change it. Have two public hearings and it's done.
Okay, so that's easy to do if we find out. Everybody takes spring break to Colfax here and they, they overrun us.
Right. All right. So your direction would be go for it? For then allow ADUs or under thirty-day occupancy? Larry? Go ahead.
I think the opposite. I think thirty days should be the absolute minimum. And I mean, we know right now we have ten and we only know where two of them are. And if we allowed ADU to be Airbnbs, I mean, we could have a real mess to manage, seems like to me. Anyway, I believe thirty days or more, that's the intent.
Thank you. All right, I think you're going to be the decider here.
Why do I have to be the decider?
Because I'm for it. I'm for doing the thirty days.
Well.
Or less than thirty days.
Like, that's the catch, because if I'm reading this, the red is what they want us to change to, right, Kathy? So it does say for a term longer than thirty days. So they want us to change it to make sure that it says longer than thirty. So we're not putting it under thirty. So that's.
That they want us to change to that, but we have to dis. They want us to change it to that, but we have the discretion to make it less.
I like the idea of, like, this part we don't like, but the rest of it.
Yeah, I like the idea of having Airbnbs available in ADUs.
Any idea how many ADUs we have now?
So based on our tally of going through the websites and seeing what's being advertised, it's about ten to twelve total.
But since we, since we approved the initial ADU thing, have we had a rush on people wanting to build more? Have we had more interest in people building more?
ADUs since twenty twenty-three. So again, we had one, we had two requests last twenty twenty-four. One was finalized and one will be finalized that will count this year. So, yeah, we, we've only had probably maybe five over the last couple of years.
So even though we approved ADUs and made it easy to get them, they're still not being put in that much.
So this gives you more options to put in ADUs. Or more reasons to put in ADUs and also gives them the ability to become small businesses.
To go along with what Kim's question is, how would we be able to track if they're being used for short-term or long-term rentals? Does that even?
No, the long-term rental.
Meaning more than thirty, more like
we don't track, we don't track long. Now, we're not aware of that. What we will continue to do is monitor Airbnb and VRBO websites to see what's being advertised. And so if suddenly we go on and we see, oh my goodness, we processed ten ADUs this year and eight of them are short-term rentals, then that probably would be a flag and we could come back and report to the council. But yeah, there's not a great way to track them.
And that's kind of one of my questions. I, I agree that we could go back and change it, but this is not something we've ever had a way to, to track how they're using them. Once they built them, we can track them building them, but not afterwards.
Yeah, we can kind of just discern by the number that are advertised for short-term rental, how many are being used. That's a pretty good metric.
And you guys are already following that anyways, so it's not an additional workload. Ask on you guys to, to keep an eye on that.
Yep.
So your preference is that we just take out the thirty-day. Would you put any number in there? Fifteen? Just out of curiosity.
No, because short-term rentals can be one day rentals.
Does the state get a care if we change that part to be even less than what their thing is? Because like, if this is what the state requested us to do and now we're saying, okay, well, we're happy with ninety-eight percent of it, but we want to change that number. Do you see that's going to be a problem coming back from the state?
I, so following up, once we adopt this, I am going to forward to HCD and let them know and they will review it. They could come back and say, hey, we noticed you deleted that. If they really pushed us, one of the things in their letter said that we could adopt a resolution stating why our. Um, if they really pushed us, one of the things in their letter said that, um, we could adopt a resolution stating why our, ordinance was consistent with, with state law, and I suppose we could do that, um.
Um, if I can make a recommendation, if you do want to allow short-term rentals in ADUs, I would simply change that section to say rental of a ADU or JADU shall comply with Chapter seventeen point one-two-three of this code, which is the section you have already adopted to regulate short-term rentals. So just do a cross-reference, say they're allowed, they have to be consistent with the short-term rental ordinance, and just leave it at that and not worry about setting separate terms for the length of the rental. Does that make sense to you?
We could also add, um, like, this references that government code to say consistent with this government, the state government code as well as our short-term rental. That way, HCD could come back, but we could, you know, point to say that that is how the law is written and therefore we're consistent. Yeah.
Okay.
There's one other question, wha- what if we did nothing?
If we did nothing?
Yeah.
If we didn't adopt this?
It would be thirty days or more if we did nothing, right? I mean, do we have to specifically state, well, you said the state law or the state already said thirty days or more?
Yes, that's what Connor is recommending, well.
And we have the ability to override that and be shorter, that's the way I understand it.
I, I think the question is, what does the ordinance say right now?
Um, our existing ordinance does not address short-term rentals in ADUs at all.
So they would be allowed?
Yes.
Right now, they're allowed under the short-term ordinance.
Yes.
And they could do that with an ADU as well?
That's, we haven't discerned, so yes.
So if we did nothing?
Right.
And just to make sure I get my numbers right, you know of about ten or twelve right now that are doing it?
Yes.
But we only know of two.
So, yes.
We don't even know two specifics.
They're, they're advertising about ten to twelve and two have come in. That's part of that twelve, um, that comply and have a permit to operate.
And is there, I don't remember, is there a limit of the number of ADUs on a large lot, for example? If somebody had two, three, five acres?
Yes, right now, one, so you have to have a primary residence, alone ADU, and one junior. Would be two total units on a single family in addition to the primary house.
So then the motion would be to adopt this as the state has requested, except for removing the thirty-day, right?
And.
And reference.
And referencing, yeah, and referencing our previous ordinance, so. There, I motioned it.
We're good with that.
Can you explain the sixty-day?
The sixty-day, um, that, uh, we receive an application. The city has sixty days to approve the building permit for constructing the ADU. It has to be completed within sixty days, the city has to process it that quickly.
And if it's a four-plan set with multiple plan shots?
Um, so the other component is that the city has to have, um, uh, pre-approved accessory dwelling unit plans available on its website. So what the city has done to comply with this, we have provided a link to Placer County, where they have the accessory dwelling unit pre-approved plans. Um, and so if folks, it's, if we had a situation where they weren't providing plans, we could say, hey, you know, here are some examples, use these. Um, but I think you bring a good point, I'm not sure, but yes, um. Right. Yes, yeah, um, and there isn't a lot of guidance on that.
It's an opportunity to update what the state votes?
No, no, it says very clearly, if you don't process within sixty days, it's approved. Yes.
So, and should we also look at adopting something in the ADU for grading permit? Not for the time limitation?
I think, I think they have to do a grading permit anyway, and so we probably don't want to tie it to ADU. I don't know, Connor, do you?
You guys can.
I think, I think that's the right answer, that the, the reg- the regulation on, on the grading permit is separate. The trend here, the, the trend with all of these new housing laws are to reduce local discretion. So if you meet the state requirements for an ADU, the state, the state law defines what an ADU is, and if you submit an application that falls within those requirements, then the ci- city has the shortened window to approve it. But if you're doing something outside of those requirements, then it's, we're not under the, the gun like that. And I think the grading permit would be something that falls outside of the requirements.
Yeah.
So, so in theory, that would mean they need to get the grading permit first, and then the building permit, and then your sixty-day starts once your grading permit is approved and they do the building, does that make sense? Was it kind of?
I, I thi- I think they're independent things, you apply for a building permit, we get sixty days to act on it.
Yeah.
We tell you, you need a grading permit, you have to treat that as a separate process, is it, do you agree with that, Kathy?
Totally.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, I think direction was good, um, so I will go ahead and make the motion to introduce a proposed, proposed ordinance as amended by title only. Conduct a public hearing to adopt the ordinance, updating the City Zoning Code, Section seventeen dot one-nine-six, accessory dwelling unit ordinance as recommended by the State Housing and Community Development Department. Uh, weigh the first reading and schedule the proposed ordinance for the second reading and adopt it at the next regular council meeting currently scheduled for July twenty-third, to be effective thirty days after adoption.
But you want that one changed?
Yeah, with the amendment, I said, as amended.
Okay.
That's as amended.
Okay.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, let's do a roll call vote, just in case, sorry, put you on the spot there.
Councilmember Douglas?
Hi.
Councilmember Hilberg?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim McCully? Mayor Loman?
Hi, thank you. All right, move on to item six, public comment. Everyone has an opportunity to address the council for a comment, uh, when the appropriate time for a comment is called, which is now. Uh, you may speak to the council on any items that are not on the agenda, and the council cannot, um, uh, we can refer them to staff and know their agenda, uh, please come to the podium to speak, you have five minutes to make comments. Anybody who would like to make a public comment on anything not on the agenda, Tim?
Tim Ryan, Colfax City Treasurer, I just want to thank Carolyn McCully and her volunteers and voluntolds of a great, um, Fourth of July. Your ability to fundraise and include so many businesses and residents of this town, uh, really shows the spirit of what this town is. And also maybe referring a little bit to what Harry said earlier, the town does have a lot of spirit, and the town does want to survive, and they will participate in all of these events that we put on. Also, too, to thank the city for the contributions that you do now for nonprofits. And being the treasurer, I know that our city budget is very lean, and for you, us to be able to help and assist with these nonprofit, uh, events is, is, is just, it just tells what this little city does. And we should all be very proud of where we are living and what we're doing in this city. And, uh, just such a big part going to all of our volunteers, so thank you very much.
Big ten, any other public comment, Tom?
Tom Parham, a city resident, former wastewater operator for the city. Uh, went out to the plant today and, um, talked to the operator there. Tried to give him, uh, some of the history of what was going on there and, uh, how, how we, uh, dewatered that, uh, one of the ponds like twelve years ago. Very impressed with him and the way the plant's running, um, it's running really well, best I've seen it. I've been going out there on and off, I've, since I left in two thousand nine, I go there like once a year, twelv- you know, every, every twice in a while. And he was very forthcoming in showing me what he did, and, uh, yeah, he's, we've got a real good operator out there. And part of that credit goes to Ron, um, for hiring him and identifying him. And he appreciates you too, because, um, he's getting what he needs to operate the plant. And that's not always the case with city councils, um, they want to, um, micromanage. And, um, I'm gonna start a new policy, I'm coming to every meeting and complaining about the old hotel. Um, it's been there empty since nineteen seventy-eight, I moved here in nineteen eighty, there it sits. And we need to put some kind of pressure on him or her, or whoever the owner is, to do something with it or sell it to somebody who will do something with it, thank you very much.
I think we can start passing out his email address if, uh, if you're interested. My phone number, something like that, and people can start, uh, start letting them know, we'd love some more attention on that. All right, uh, thanks again, and any other public comment tonight?
Harry Anderson, is there some kind of, uh, thing you can do to get these people to clean up their properties? The, the commercial properties, is there anything you can do, like the liquor store with the weeds this high? And the for lease signed by the Arco Station, that property is a mess.
We are a little behind on our bench station management enforcement, but, uh, we're getting on that.
Yeah, and the seventy-six station that's abandoned or whatever the hell is going on with that thing?
It's fenced off and waiting.
I get the hotel thing, I get that, but that's, you gotta find that to know it's a problem. You can't, you don't even know those downtown, and when you get off the freeways and you see all this garbage, I mean, the Exxon station that used to be there by Tom Sierra, that was a gas station, now it's a wrecking yard. And that's what you see. We asked him if we could put a, a Matty's directional sign on his piece of property, and he said, I don't want anything on my dirt. Well, that'd have been the nicest thing on his dirt, but I'd just like to see somebody actually force these people to clean this thing up. So the first impression when people come here, it doesn't look like crap.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have mine. All right, we'll move on to item seven real quick, uh, council and staff business, Kim Yona kicks off.
Okay, a lot of us look at, uh, Dr. Harry as a town curmudgeon, and, uh, he is, but I gotta give him credit, he spent, uh, three hours down at the, um, Auburn City Council meeting. And, um, they're trying to pass an ordinance about, uh, places that don't open, but commercial buildings that are, are been vacant for a long time. And so, uh, we have the ordinance that Auburn is working on and they're, they're massaging it. And, um, anyhow, they're getting close to either rejecting it or adopting it. So, Tom Parham, we are, we are working at it from different angles, so. That's my report, thank you.
You, Larry?
Just a quick one, um, I was at the Sierra Vista Center today and, um, kids are playing basketball there. They haven't taken advantage yet of the, um, partial grant that we gave them, and I expect them to be back and ask for more, more money so that they can fix that floor. But they're moving ahead, and as I mentioned, kids are playing there already, which is kind of exciting to me, an old basketball player. But I'm too slow.
Caroline?
Oh, if it didn't have the word third in it, that's about all I, the last two weeks, so.
All right. Thursday after the council meeting, I got to go to the Placer County Water Agency Board Retreat up at, uh, Hellhole Dormitory. Uh, myself and a bunch of local electeds and, uh, PCWA board and some other folks went up there and had a great time. Uh, and also learned, uh, got to have some presentations on, uh, some of the fire, fire mitigation projects that were going on in the area. And, uh, there's a lot of great information, good presenters, and, uh, look forward to doing it again sometime. But, uh, also had the LAFCO meeting today and, uh, made it back in time for this meeting, and, uh, third July was great, again, good job Caroline, and everybody else too, and Caroline, and everybody else involved in this, all the people that helped with fundraising and donated and everything, it was just a great event. So that's all I have, city manager, quick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I also attended the, uh, PCWA, uh, Board Retreat. Um, one of the interesting things they showed was where they'd done some forest rehabilitation, talked about how that, uh, makes it a little more fire safe and what the cost of doing that is long-term, which really isn't sustainable at this point without lots of grant money, but it's nice to see that they're doing, getting some work done up there to help with fire. Um, attended the Railroad Heritage Park Museum, uh, among the many things we talked about, it's just, uh, possible grants and groups to find funding from. Um, continue to work with the, uh, Adams Ashby Group on the, uh, finalization of the communal, the community development, block grant management agreement, we just have a few more things to iron out, that'd be up and running. Uh, third July, again, preparation, I'm sure, uh, for, most people noticed, but, you know, trash can painting, uh, curb painting, bench painting, rehabilitation out there, uh, some, uh, the Black Rail fence was painted at the art park out here. And the sidewalks along, uh, Main Street, uh, north and south were all pressure washed and cleaned up nicely. Uh, maintenance department also cleared brush weeds in the Roy Toms area, performed vegetation control, and the drainage just running behind the Shadow Woods homes. Uh, weeded the entry to the ballpark, repaired the sidewalk along the Grass Valley and Church Street, did some cleanup with the corp yard, and found, uh, some replacement parts and have the, uh, splash pad up and running again. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much, then we will, um, finally move on to item eight, council business. First item up tonight is the approval of the final plans for the Colfax Skate Park, city manager, will you introduce this item?
Okay, tonight we have, uh, Ty here and Carl, uh, from, uh, the city to discuss the updated skate park plans and answer questions afterward. Accuse himself, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, Councilmember Hilberg, if, if you wouldn't mind, uh, stepping down for the side of, yeah, sorry, due to the conflict of interest. And the conflict is, uh, Councilmember Hilberg owns property within five hundred feet of the proposed project, so he is barred from voting on it, but he will be commenting as a member of the public.
Sorry for the interruption. No worries, um, so they're here to answer questions, uh, discuss the updated skate park plans. Uh, afterwards, uh, staff request council to accept the final plans and authorize the city manager's solicitor bids for construction of the park. Gentlemen, the floor is yours, Ty, Carl?
Uh, Mayor Loman, council, uh, Ted Connor's vice president with the Colfax Green Machine, uh, again, here before you after a ten-year massive project, uh, you know, finally getting to this, I mean, this is the closest we've ever been. Um, and obviously the final hurdles, but I do want a big shout out to Carl and, uh, Ron for helping out, working with, uh, New Line. We actually have two members online, uh, Canton and Chris, uh, they're here to also answer any questions. Chris Long. Um, and then also my, uh, board and everyone with the Colfax Green Machine, helping to support, uh, other members that have been with the Colfax, uh, skate park project for a long time. Again, moving forward, hopefully get a, you know, the approval, this is part of the process, you guys, uh, first initially, you know, approved the initial design, the re- restructure of the design to fit current, uh, budget. And then they have done that, they've been through the, all through the final plans and working with Carl, so looking. So looking to move forward on this and finally putting this project to bed. So if you have any questions for me or Carl or Chris or Canton, they're also online too.
Okay, thank you. Kim, you got any questions?
Just an easy one. I remember eight years ago, we discussed this and I asked you if this fad ever goes away, will it be used for other functions? And you assured me that it would. So maybe you could address that.
So no, one thing we decided, you know, they did an open plan when it came to, you know, using it for, you know, people roller skating or other functions and stuff like that. And I know you, one time you asked about the the ball being used for another pool site or something, but that's not, we took out the, you know, good portion of that. But it is, again, that the site in itself, you know, again, is open for a lot of different wield objects and our recreation. So it's not just specifically to skateboards. It's opening up to all recreational wield vehicle or skateboard, scooters, bikes, BMX. So it was designed for that and also designed for the fact of, you know, someone from the very beginning to someone in the expert level.
The only thing I want to say, this is just for the public's knowledge, that while we have a beautiful picture of it, that doesn't mean what it's going to look like, because this includes all the extras that we hope to get to with enough funding. So I, I just don't want the public to go, wait a minute, that doesn't look anything like the picture. So this isn't our perfect universe, what everything comes out. I know that the, I think the bench and the overhead shade structure and then some of the aesthetic. That's the, the hope that we can make squeeze those in there, right?
And that's where, again, the design in itself is trying to meet the current. The in-kind donations coming in is reducing those costs to hopefully add on some of the additional amenities when it comes to like the shade structure and stuff like that. When it comes to the ultimate, when it comes to the site itself and the features of the skate park that is coming in, it's just that, you know, some of the nice things on the edges.
The aesthetics that make it pretty. I just, I don't want anybody to come back and go, but wait a minute, that's not what it looks like. And hopefully that's what will happen and all the, every, all the stars will align and we'll have enough to do it all. But I, I just want to make sure that that's clear, that it's, it's a beautiful rendering with the extras in there that we hope we can fit in, so. Well, that means somebody's got to read the cover. They like pictures. I just want to make sure that it doesn't come back on us in any way going, but, and we're like, no, we're hoping.
But I think that obviously with Chris and Canton, I really got to hand it to them. They've been very, very professional and working with them. And knowing and understanding this community and coming up here and seeing it and, and the design, they know that this is going to have a nice fit to the community.
So, thank you.
Definitely. All right. Go ahead and open it up to the public. Larry, you want to go first? All right, go ahead, Eric. Come on up. You got a comment?
Do you promote this thing beyond city Colfax to where it's like a big deal? Yeah. Okay. So in the hopes is to get some kind of recognition for that thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One thing, we are working with Crystal Howard. I don't know if she's on. She's with the Cornerstone Project. She's actually out of Southern California. She's one that's helping out with all the, you know, working with the aggregate cult, you know, community with the in-kind donations. They want to, they're promoting it when it comes to when we do the opening day. They have a lot of connections in the skateboarding community and bringing professional skateboarders up for opening day and really just kind of showcasing Colfax's new location.
Yeah, I don't know if I, if I can follow up. This is Crystal Howard with Skate For Concrete. Just to reiterate, yeah, we've worked with the local concrete companies and the local aggregate companies to donate the materials, concrete and aggregates to help build this park. And our intent is to promote the construction of it, like capture that in a video, really celebrate the grant and opening and have a sign supported by the industry that would promote the park and really like celebrate the connection and the support of the local of Colfax and also to promote workforce development and encourage the younger generation to consider careers in the concrete industry and just show the great collaboration and support of, of this great community.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Harry.
So in the performance industry, the days of drag strips and Fast Fridays and all that stuff with sponsors. Is this something that you can get the manufacturers involved with of skateboard products and accessories? I mean, to want to make this a known thing. I mean, it's free advertising dollars, quite frankly.
Are you still talking to me? Sorry. We are, we already have sponsorship and then we're gathering as, as we get prepared for the opening day, we will be soliciting sponsorship for that opening day. As it goes to like giving giveaways and having demos and just having that be a great celebration. So yes, we're putting together a whole plan. But it all depends on when it's going to start construction and when it's done. So we kind of need to know the timeframe in order to nail those details down. But yes, that's the intent to get it recorded and promote it as much as we can.
So there's manufacturers that would actually show up and like have a, like on the 3rd of July, be a vendor kind of thing?
Especially as it relates to the concrete industry that are supporting and supplying the concrete for free to support the project. And then we'll be working with local vendors, local skate shops. We'll be working with New Line and, and local skate industry to, to provide those and have an area where they can have a booth, if you will, if they want to promote or display any products that they might have.
Yeah, because I would think the groupies that want to go to the skate park, the bigger the name of the supplier, the more people will want to come just to see them, which would in turn get them to see the skate park.
Yes. I'll jump in, Crystal.
Yeah, thank you.
This is Canton Russell, part of New Line Skate Parks Director of Design. Yes, when we had some of the input sessions with the user groups that are local there, you are all lucky that you do have some interested skateboarders who are part of that advocacy group there for this skate park who are tied to the skateboarding industry. I was pleasantly surprised to see some of those people on the call. So they will definitely make sure that people in the industry know about it and support it. And hopefully some of the opportunities and excitement of this skate park in this region will drive people to come to not only skate at the skate park, but to spend money in the town of Colfax. In fact, I live down in San Diego, California, and I actually ran into one of those advocacy members just a few weeks ago at a big skateboarding event. And he reiterated to me how excited everyone was and that they have a lot of ties up and down the coast in the industry.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other?
Thank you. I'm Larry Hilberg. I live in Colfax. The reason I'm speaking from the podium is our property is 50 feet away from this skate park. And our front door is 50 yards away. And because of that, I can't vote on this issue. I'm not sure if that was the intent of the law. I think it was the other way around, but this started out to be a skate park for the kids of Colfax. It was going to cost about $100,000, maybe 200 at the most with no city funds, all money raised by the Green Machine and the best design available by Grindline. That's where it started out. Now it's ending up as a large skate park. It's mixed equipment, mixed skills, mixed ages, all thrown together without any supervision in a secluded area. I don't think that's a good idea. We are the only people that can see down into that area. I don't think it's a safe environment. Actually, I know it isn't. We ended up with $488,000 worth of taxpayer money for this. We can't even fix our own streets. I know, because I live on a street like that. I have to admit, I'm a little distressed to hear about events and skate park equipment, monet, uh, marketing and, and huge events so close to our property. There's actually another property closer to ours. I didn't ever hear of anything like that. I did hear that we're going to have a Skate For Concrete little stand down there to encourage kids to get a job in the concrete industry. It's a nice saying, I guess. I guess what concerns me the most is that I thought we were gonna, tonight, the council was going to approve the design. And what it says here is you're going to approve the plan. And I don't think you have a plan. You don't know how much money is forthcoming from Green Machine. You do have a design. You don't have a build plan. You don't have a budget. You don't have any bids. You essentially don't know what you don't know. And I just don't see how you can approve anything other than the design tonight. It seems to me, from what I heard and what Caroline said, is this is what is known as a design build project, where we hope more money is going to come in and the city is going to watch over and we're just going to kind of build it and maybe it'll look like the design we have and maybe not. It just seems to me like it's not far enough along. And that's all I have to say.
I, I can respond to some of that.
Please.
Yeah, so the skate park is on the smaller side. I would say the average community level skate park is probably around 7,000 to 8,000 square feet. A regional sized skate park is typically 20,000 square feet or bigger. And that would, you know, host kind of bigger scale type of events. So this project is only 8,000 square feet, so it's fairly small because of the space we have there to kind of keep it tucked in and not overly crowd the features. I think the event that we were talking about was the opening day to create excitement there for the opening day event. I don't think that this was necessarily created to have events there all the time, but I think 8,000 square feet is a good community sized park. And the plans that I think you have there that Carolyn was sharing is actually construction documents ready to bid to solicit construction bids from qualified skate park contractors like Grindline, as Larry mentioned. So the goal is, in a project like this where it's designed bid build, is to create really thorough construction documents to get qualified bidders to build a project. So what you have there are a full set of engineer drawings stamped and signed by, you know, by a structural engineer. And also the specifications. So the only thing that are considered ad alternates, as Carolyn alluded to, was the shade structure and the seating benches, but the skate park itself with all the colors are actually part of the base bid. So the majority of those pretty renders are actually in the base bid, just to be clear. And, you know, that's all, that's in part of the funding and hard work that Green Machine and others and Ty kind of pulled together to get the funding for that, including the in-kind donations as shared by Crystal Howard. Hopefully that helps.
Yes. Thank you for addressing that. And Carl?
And we do have numbers from Green Machine on the amount of money set aside.
That's what I was going to.
And we do have the county fund set aside and the city fund set aside. So we're, we're good to go. That's it. The Parks and Rec funds. So those funds were already encumbered specifically for Parks and Rec and could not be used for roads or any other projects except for parks.
Correct. And so if you look at the fiscal impacts on the staff report, Larry, you'll see all the numbers, the, the two grants that we have, the city match or the city funding and the money coming from Green Machine.
We are bid ready.
They are bid ready. We'll, we'll go to bid. And if the bids come back and they're higher than the budget that we have allowed, then we will come back to council to see the direction that council wants to take.
Thank you, Carl. Robert, sorry about that. Please. And thank you so much for everything you've done to help coordinate this.
Dugan, I'm a Placer County local. I grew up in Placer County, but down the hill. Don't hold it against me, because when I was a kid, if anybody in Colfax needed a doctor, they drove down to Auburn or Roseville. My dad was one of those doctors, so just don't hold it too far against me. But as a Placer local, I also serve my day job for the construction materials industry in California. So I represent all the Roxanne and gravel companies, asphalt companies and concrete companies that help build everything in Colfax. And they've all come to the table and committed to, to this project. And as I shared a couple of weeks ago, when we weren't sure if it was going to be on, I came up anyway, because this is like a second home to me with Josh Alpine being my brother from another mother, right? Spend a lot of money in the Green Machine and 4th of July and crab feed. So I, I'm really thrilled because I, I don't, I said it then and I probably said it poorly and I'll say it poorly now, but I don't know of a, of a city with kids more deserving of a project like this than Colfax, right? And I'm talking about the kids, not us old curmudgeons, the kids. And we heard it six months ago when this project got delayed again because of a lot of confusion that was created about the project and whether it was ready to go. We had to reboot the design. I can tell you the design looks absolutely great for the size of lot that you have. They did a great job. Thank my colleagues at, at New Line and, and with Crystal Waters for making that happen. And I'm here to encourage you, approve the plan, get it out to bid. Let's get it built before the cost keeps going up. The reason the cost has gotten more expensive is because of the delays, right? So another delay just means more costs. And we'll fight like heck to make sure we can cover that as well. But I'm really excited to go bang on all the doors of every company, along with my colleague Dana Davis at Tykert, that made commitments to this project for the kids, right? Not for us old curmudgeons, but for us kid, for the kids. So they have this, right? I love just walking up to that property and now those kids, those doggone kids recognize me. So, hey, when are we getting our skateboard park? When do we get our skateboard park? So looking forward to getting going on, on building it. So thank you. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Absolutely.
Most of this happened in Morgan. I promise you that I gave more hours to kids. This room put together and I'd bet a week's pay on it. I spent 30 years doing that. Secondly, that until the bids come in, I don't know how you know you have a plan. I don't see how you can approve anything more than going out to bid.
Part of the planning process is getting estimates of procedure, of projected costs. So you, you get a good idea of what you got.
Okay, my third sentence was the last time this came forward about a year ago is it blew the budgets for a number of different reasons. And it might again. You don't know till the bids come in, because they're a reflection of a lot of things, including how busy are the contractors? If they're really busy, the bids are going to be high. I mean, you, you just don't know yet. I am encouraged that if the budget is blown, that you're going to look at it again. But I can't see how you can improve more than going out to bid.
That's what we're hopefully going to approve tonight, going out to bid.
The numbers. Oh, thank you. Once we get the bid numbers, then we will evaluate the project.
Sometimes one player makes a difference. It doesn't say plans, it just says plan.
Those plans on the resolution. Is it different in the agenda? Right. And we have an online comment?
It's an email.
It's an email comment from Jane Gallagher. She has a couple of questions wanting to know, will the city be increasing liability insurance while the park is under construction and afterwards? If so, how much will it change the city budget? And will the fencing around the park be higher than it is now?
Do you want to touch on that?
The city has talked with, we're, we're basically self-insured. We're in a insurance pool. It's called SCORE. It's a multi-city, it's a multi-small city insurance pool. We've talked to SCORE about the project and they're on board with it. They didn't indicate any large increase insurance at this time. So I'm not expecting to see any. And I think the fencing will come out in the project design. Can't tell you anymore about the fencing and that.
Yes, there are fence improvements planned in the project.
I could help, I could help answer that. The majority of the fencing that is there on site will maintain. The fencing will not be any higher than it needs to be or, or what it is there now. We do have, we're making sure that the proper barriers and fencing remain intact to create separation from the adjacent properties that are not part of this skate park project. So everything should be fairly similar. There's no plans necessarily make anything bigger than it is now. And this is going to be signed and posted as a ride-at-your-own-risk facility as all skate parks are in the state of California. So that reduces you know, any concerns and limits the liability of agencies. So that if somebody hurts and falls himself, just like they would in a city sidewalk, the city is not liable because of proper signage posting that this is a ride-at-your-own-risk facility.
Great. Thank you very much. Right. Do we have any other comment, Tim?
With this, does it impact the parking? Is there enough parking when other events such as Little League and/or other just regular events are going on? I just know for the skate park, the, the swim park that parking is very limited right there. And I'm not sure if you're using the outer area where the, where the Little League parking is. And then also, is there lighting? It, does this skate park, will it be open during the evening? And yeah, if, if there's lighting.
So it'll be dusk to dawn, just like the park. Or dawn to dusk, whatever.
Yeah, it's going to be under, run under the same, like, say, recreation time that you have. And then as far as the signage goes, that we'd like to put a, a Colfax skate park sign that basically pushes people up to the other side of the bigger parking lot and not going in the little parking lot.
And we will be adding a security cameras, additional cameras. It's part of plan to increase security for the skate park area and the whole park itself. So this'll bring a big increase in security up in that area, too. We've already been doing pretty good with the cameras we have. They've been helping prevent stuff or at least let us act after vandalism or anything has occurred. So.
One more comment based on traffic studies and parking studies we've done at other skate parks. We have seen that the increase of cars and parking sometimes is not as much as you might assume because there's a lot of carpooling and people sharing. You know, rides to get to the skate park. A lot of the demographic users are not able to drive at their age, so they usually go with other skaters or their parents drop them off or they carpool with parents. So not to say there won't be people coming there parking and skating there, but sometime, based on the studies we've done, it's not quite as an increase as people might think due to the demographic of the users.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Any additional public comment tonight? Nothing online? Okay, bring it back to council one more time. Any other comments from council? Cam, anything else? Caroline, anything else? Right. Then can I make this motion too?
Yeah.
I do, very much so. All right. Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution approving the final skate park plans and authorize the city manager to solicit bids for construction for the Colfax skate park? All right. I, I would like to make a motion. Can I get a second?
You, you've been here longer than I have. You want to second it?
Go ahead.
All right, I'll second it.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Passes. Finally. Congratulations, Ty and Green Machine. And I'm sorry, Larry. All right. And I'll move on to item eight B, the Green Machine donation for the Lions Skate Park. City manager, you want to kick this one off or Connor?
I, I can, I can just go.
Go. That's right. Connor kicks us off.
This is a, this is just a straightforward agreement to accept the donation from the Green Machine. It does commit the city to using the donations to build a skate park. But it gives the city some discretion to choose the design of the skate park and, you know, the, the design location configuration, those kind of things. And it asks the, it's, it's got standard indemnification and release of claims and all those sorts of things. So it's pretty pro forma, but that's what it does. And the recommendation is to direct the city manager and the city attorney to finalize the agreement with Green Machine.
Great. Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah, let's, uh, go ahead.
My only question, Connor, is out of curiosity, why does the agreement not include any of the dollar amounts? I know it's all listed in the previous item, but it's not listed in the agreement about how much money they're transferring over or anything. So I'm just curious why those details aren't in there.
It was an oversight on my part and it was not clear to me the value of the materials and services they had. And I know it's in the earlier resolution.
Okay, but since it's in the earlier one, we're comfortable with it not being in your, your specific one that we have here?
I can certainly amend it to include the amounts recited in the earlier.
I mean, I don't feel that it needs to come back to us whatsoever. I do think they should be in there though. So if we can approve it, but ask that it get edited to have the actual specific dollar amounts and stuff in there, just so that we all are on the same page and everything gets transferred.
I can definitely make that change.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, exactly. As long as we can still approve it, you know that needs to be edited. That would be great.
All right, Kim, you got anything? For this item? Public comment on this item? Tim?
It's about a hundred thousand dollars worth of materials and services, forty thousand dollars worth of cash donations approximately. That, that's what's coming. And then there's a grant and I am not clear on whether Green Machine is in possession of the grant funds. I asked for documentation of this and haven't received it yet. But there's potentially a, a public, public funds in the form of a grant that they applied with in conjunction with the city. I'm not entirely clear on that detail.
Ty, would you like to bring the details?
So Green Machine is not actually in possession of any grant? Okay. Yeah, so the agreement is written so that Green Machine is responsible for issuing receipts for the donation. Services are not. You, you, you can't get a tax deduction for donating services, but yeah, dollars and materials definitely tax exempt. And the resolution recites that this is a public purpose for purposes of the, you know, IRS regulations. Okay.
Thanks for. All right. Any, Tim? As soon as we're done with this. Well, we'll make sure we invite him up. Larry, did you have any comments? Yeah, it looked like you wanted to come up.
Just wanted to note that the microphone was not on, so we couldn't really hear the speaker comments.
Sorry about that.
Mike is on. I don't see how you can go forward without the specific amounts in your, whatever you're voting on. I don't see how you can do that. Forty thousand dollars, when I heard that number, that's surprisingly low compared to the numbers that have been kicked around in the past. And I want to read something here from our own financial policies. It's under C expenditures and it's item one A. Before the city undertakes any agreements that would create fixed ongoing expenses, the cost implications of such agreements will be determined for current and future years. So that's part of our own ordinance.
Well, this, this doesn't create a fixed ongoing expense, so.
Pardon me?
This, this agreement to accept donations does not create a fixed ongoing expense.
I know that. That, that's talking about the overall agreement. If it goes forward, which I assume it will.
The overall project? Yeah, we, we did evaluate those expenses and we have calculated those out and our, our plan's approximately ten, fifteen thousand dollars a year for ongoing expenses for maintenance.
Ken, if you can go explain, you guys have dealt with this, you know, when it comes to that maintenance and upkeep, you did talk to the Carl and Ron when regards to those minimal costs when it comes to that.
Your, your microphone was off in the beginning of that statement, Ty. Are you asking us to just clarify what we typically see for ongoing maintenance costs?
Yes, please.
And having you know, worked with and asked these questions with the skate park project, which is formerly the Tony Hawk Foundation, they've reviewed and investigated hundreds of different skate parks around North America. And believe it or not, the average ongoing maintenance cost is only about five hundred dollars a year. And that's just average. So if, if it's a bigger skate park and it's a higher traffic area, bigger cities, sometimes that cost might go up. It also depends on the materials. If this had, like, for instance, more of a, a bigger more authentic skate pool or a bowl that was bigger with pool coping. And those materials do need to be replaced quite often, every five to 10 years. But we do not have those materials in this skate park. So everything that we've designed might be a little bit more of a cost on the front end, but it's because it's very durable materials that will last for decades if, you know, constructed properly. So yeah, we do not anticipate anywhere near fifteen thousand dollars a year in, in maintenance costs.
Thanks, Ken. And I just want to kind of comment just for a lot of the people that have been supporting the skate park for the last 10 years and donating money and, and, you know, from a hundred bucks to, you know, the Smith Family Estate, who Spencer's on here right now, gave. It's not that, the fact that we're don't, you know, it's because we spent well over a hundred thousand dollars in this project that we've raised through volunteer and work and fundraising and sponsors that we've done solely through Green Machine. So it's not that we've only done forty-one thousand in the last 10 years. It's been way more than that. So I just want to clarify that.
Thank you, Ty. All right. And the other public comment on this item? Nope, nothing online. All right. Back to council for a motion.
I saw a motion.
With the amendment of adding, all right. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Move on to item eight C. Yeah, you guys got to, got to seat swap here. You get to come back. She's got to go. Thank you all for everything for this project. You guys were amazing. Yes. Finally, thanks for coming to support it. Okay. Item eight C is Railroad Days Request for Funding. See, who wants to kick this off? Go ahead, Ron.
Okay, in 2018, Fred and Renee Abbott launched Colfax Railroad Days, which was formerly known as Founder's Day, into a two-day event. In 2022, Carolyn McCollough joined the Abbott's in organizing the event. And by 2024, Caroline became the president of the organization, taking over the planning and operations of the event. One highly utilized part of the event is the trackless train ride, which last year was offered free so everyone could enjoy this attraction. Unfortunately, the cost of the trackless train ride is projected to be forty-eight hundred dollars this year. And thus Caroline is here tonight to ask the council in the name of Railroad Days for a donation of thirty-five hundred dollars to help cover the cost of this event. Caroline, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Ron and council. Yeah, so last year was the first year that we did the train ride as a free event for the kids or anybody who wanted to ride it. In previous years, they had charged three dollars for it, which was a little bit to help the cost, but of course never met the whole bill for that project. And last year, I really was adamant that we have a lot of free activities for kids to be able to do, which is why we introduced the Kid Zone and then the free train ride. And I'll admit, that's what we used for a huge marketing piece. It got blasted all over social media that the city of Colfax was sponsoring the train ride for everybody to enjoy for free. Now admittedly, we lost it for half of Saturday because it broke, but they promised it won't happen again. They promised it'll be in top working order for us. But yes, so we want to bring that back. And we are not asking for the full amount to cover that bill, even though they jumped it by twenty-seven percent on us this year. Because we will do additional fundraising and donations for that. But if the city would be willing to kick in thirty-five hundred to help pay for that train ride, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Hey, Caroline? Uh, comments from the council? With Kim? Anything?
Is there a possibility that one of these years we could just buy the train?
It's actually in process to have one built for us that would then be able to be used at other functions. We would basically rent it out to be able to use. But there are plans in the process of being, having one built. It's just a matter of finding the engine that's going to be powerful enough to pull, you know, the three cars and people, but it is absolutely in process and Matt Abrew with the Wandering Railroad is part of that, along with my husband and my father-in-law. They're all working on.
I talked to the football coach and he said that he would volunteer some of his defensive linemen to be the engine.
Nice.
I don't know if my insurance will cover that one right there, but we are absolutely looking to be able to build one so that we will have one in Colfax and not have to pay this kind of a fee to rent it out. So.
Cool. Larry, anything?
Yeah, just a question. I'm, I'm sure you run a really tight budget. And I'm just wondering, did you have any seed money left over from last year coming forward to this?
We had left after everything about eighteen hundred dollars after the event that I had left in the bank once it was all said and done. And so that's kind of what I've had to be able to start us back off. So. Our, our total budget for last year, I think we did everything for just under twelve thousand dollars. And obviously it's going to be a little bit more this year. Our insurance is a little bit more expensive. And then as everybody knows, cost for everything, like I said, it's a twenty-seven percent increase just on this train alone. So.
Hey, just to be clear, I'm definitely in favor of this.
Thirty-five hundred is going to be enough?
It's all I'm going to ask you for.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm determined to raise the rest on our own.
Right. We'll see where you get the fundraising. Right. Yeah. Make sure you come back if you don't. Okay. Any public comment? Tim?
Okay. Can we set up a donation barrel by where the people get on the train? Not that they do have to pay or anything, but I think maybe just to help offset some of the costs that you're going to incur on this.
We do have a donation bucket that stays over there. And my mother-in-law gets parked over there as well because she is phenomenal. She, my father-in-law and my mother-in-law are involved with Maricopa Livestreamers in Arizona. And she works that donation booth when everybody gets on the train. So we park her over there and she does phenomenal at it. So I know we brought in a couple hundred bucks last year from that spot. So yes, there will be one there as long, and we also have one at the information booth and we do a raffle and help supplement everything with the raffle tickets as well. And we do a raffle and help supplement everything with the raffle tickets as well.
Great. Any other public comment? No, nothing online. All right, can I get a motion to approve thirty five hundred dollars for Railroad Days?
So moved second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, easy. All right, and one more. Come on back up. See, can we table this item for next time? Yeah. All right, yeah, no, we got, we got them. All right, we'll bring on item eight D, the Fourth of July decorating contest, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Fourth of July Decorating Contest is an extension of the Winterfest Christmas Decorating Contest. We're also looking at doing Halloween this year and seeing what else we can add as we go. This year, there are five entries for the council to pick from. First, second, and third place winners will be awarded prizes. Council, can you make your recommendations on first, second, third? And by the way, this year is gift cards from Hills Flat.
Okay, so. And this one. This one's up on this corner over here.
That's on Driftwood Culver.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't remember if they had entered. I said I was taking pictures of what was out there because it was fun, trying to encourage them to enter. And and you had seen the one. Susie's on Schultz, yes. You had seen, and I know I have a picture of the Schultz house and Sean can tell you what else was on there. And that's the one with the white stars on it, the big white stars on their wall. See, and that's the, what was it? You had one other home address because you had three home addresses and this was the other one other than Schultz. Sorry, I didn't think to look up my addresses from you. I thought I had saved it in here. Doggy Depot, yep. Because that that was the first one was thirty North Main, no. Yeah, no, that's wrecking crew. Sorry. Okay, so yeah, the first one was forty eight Grass Valley, one thirty Schultz is the other one. And then I think this is the other one you had right there, the the third house.
Yeah, it's forty four West Church.
Yeah.
And that one's, that one's Grass Valley Street.
Mm hmm. Sorry, I should have put the addresses on them and I didn't think about it. I did not think about it. Yes, and I think they had both indoor and outdoor. And just just so everybody knows, the decorations that were on the the southern seating area, the wrecking crew did all of those. So those are part of their contest. I just stole their idea of the the swag bunting and put it around the rest of town. But that was all their stuff. That was nothing that the third of July did.
Awesome.
Okay. So. Yeah, that's your church street, right? No, sorry, that was the Grass Valley. Yep, that's Grass Valley.
Yeah, the image on them is it is part of that scene.
That is that grass in the front.
They painted stars on it.
Yes, so they did stars to the grass. So they got both sides of it, which I love. Mm hmm, sorry. You can picture same there. Yeah.
This one is the.
No, that I think that was the extra one because the other one, the other one is the one that's right next to the post office. Yeah.
That one is West Church, forty four West Church.
Yes. All right. So do we want to let the, do we want to let them comment on it or is this just for us to comment on? The public?
Let's see. No, but while we're deciding, so. Let's open it up for public comment while we're deciding. Do we have any public comment on this item? No, that looked great.
You're all just excited to have people participating.
I am. All right. He was loading. You guys want to do it separately and we announce the winner at the next one?
No, we told them we were going to announce it tonight.
All right.
Yeah.
Guys want to?
Five South Main Street.
Put the pictures back up, I can hit the addresses. No, just read the addresses off.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yep, I'm going to get myself all. Five South Main, forty four West Church, thirty North Main, one thirty Schultz, and forty eight Grass Valley.
You're so.
Say thirty North Main, one thirty Schultz. And forty eight Grass Valley Street.
Thirty. And forty Grass Valley.
Forty eight.
Forty eight. Grass Valley.
What was the second one, Amanda?
Forty four West Church.
Okay.
All right, first picture.
Okay. That's also.
What's this? This is.
That's forty eight. That's, yeah, that's forty eight Grass Alley.
Next.
Skip. Skip. That's five South Main. Skip. That was the.
It's forty four West Church.
The Grass Valley again?
We're missing.
And then you're missing. And this is your thirty, the one thirty Schultz is the one we don't have pictures of and Sean would have to describe that to you. And that's thirty North Main.
Okay, you want to go back to the top, Amanda?
So next time, next, next time I'll put addresses.
The first picture is forty eight West Grass.
Oh, first picture.
Which one is that again? That one there?
This one right here, this is the forty eight Grass Valley Street, this with the spray painted stars.
Votes for this one? One? First.
Wait, votes in. You're going to count them up? Okay, so that gets one of my votes, yeah, because.
What do you like?
Okay.
Next. Five South Main.
That's Doggy Depot.
Votes.
I wish I had a picture of on the inside.
Forty four West Church.
Wait a minute, I wasn't sure what we're doing.
We're voting. Whether this deserves to be a winner.
And we each get three votes, okay.
All right, so forty four West Church is one of my votes because I like forty four. Yeah. She took it down Saturday morning, right before I got there.
It looked really great.
Yeah.
Lots of, lots of bunting.
Yeah, it had lots of bunting, it was, yeah. And then thirty North Main, you have both an inside and an outside picture. Yeah, and that's my other vote there.
Okay. Well, we have a tie between forty four West Church. No, we have a tie between thirty North Main and forty eight Grass Valley. And we have a tie between. One thirty Schultz and forty four West Church. So this was not a particularly effective system for. Giving, giving votes.
Well, I didn't hear any votes from Kim.
And you only, you didn't hear any from me either.
Sean and I were voting.
I can give you, I'll give you my three votes. And that's thirty North Main and the Grass Valley Street one. And then five North Main. Uh, yeah.
We'll perfect this by Halloween, I promise.
We have a tie.
We tie.
First place, forty eight.
Scoring system.
Congratulations to our winners. We'll make that not take twenty minutes next time. All right, we'll move on to, oh, wait. Yeah, we don't need to like make a resolution or approve anything, right? We just got our winners and we're good. All right, action taken, moving on to.
Have one public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment.
Yes, the microphone wasn't on, so we couldn't hear who the three winners were.
I am so sorry about that. The first place was forty eight Grass Valley Street. And I added up the scores wrong. That actually was first place outright. See, so first good, so good, good scoring, Ron. First place by right, forty eight Grass Valley. Then we had a tie between thirty North Main and five South Main. And Ron broke the tie with thirty North Main taking second and five South Main taking third.
Thank you.
Of course.
Absolutely. All right. Now, if there's no more fellow comment, we'll move on to item nine, go to the order. Kim, what do you got?
Okay, tomorrow, right here between six and seven o'clock, the first meeting of the Winterfest. So come in from whatever you're doing from the farmer's market and we'll discuss from six to seven. It's short because it's the first of four meetings. And then the last thing I have is that my favorite part of the third of July was the pie eating contest. And the one hundred pound tortoise race. They made a mad dash of five yards. And they did it under fifteen minutes. And they dangled a bell pepper in front of the winning tortoise and he scurried down there in fifteen minutes.
Impressive. Thank you, Kim. Larry?
Just a couple of comments on the third of July. I thought the town looked great on the third. But even more impressive was that everything was cleaned up on the fourth. And I thought that was, that was awesome, a strong statement for the volunteers. And then the second is. I'm still, I wish I had gone to that sewer plant visit. I wasn't able to do it. But I think it's still amazing that our increase this year was zero. Still pleased about that. And then the other is, thanks to Ron, we now have a sign right up behind the VFW Hall. That says Marson Way to commemorate Ed Marson and his family. And that pleases me more than anything.
Agreed, thank you, Larry. All right.
Well, I will tell you at eleven thirty at night, you had two of our public work staff, both Carolines, Ron and my son dragging trash cans down Main Street to pick up trash. So it was, it was exciting and the community does need to know that we were three minutes away from not having a fireworks show. It literally came down to a three minutes left when they finally said, yes, we could do them. So it was exciting. And I'm very sad to say that somebody has taken our donate, our thank you to the donors banner down. It is missing. The thank you donor banner that is on the caboose is now missing. And it is supposed to stay up for thirty days after the event and it is gone. And I checked with Public Works and I checked with the church because their banner is up and it is not.
Check with the guys that were manning the caboose.
Yeah, no, it was up on, it was up on the fourth, it was up on the fifth. We know it was, and I was told somebody didn't notice it on Sunday. So I would really like the banner back so we can thank our donors that made that event happen. So somebody please put my banner back up so we can thank our donors.
Or at least bring it by City Hall and hang it back up.
That would be appreciated.
Thank you. And just once again, amazing fourth, third of July, great work. Can't wait to see Railroad Days come out.
It will be entertaining.
So you can't wait either? And Kim, if the skate park ever. Run park for you, how's that? Does that work?
I love it.
Awesome, yeah, there, we can do tortoise races out of the bowl, that's even better. And that's all I got. Anything for the go to order, city manager?
Uh, yeah, just a special thanks to the city of Colfax, maintenance staff helping keep the place clean and running all day in the third. And a big shout out to the volunteers that helped cleaned up afterwards. Thank you all so much.
And a big shout out to the volunteers that helped clean it up afterwards. Thank you all so much.
Absolutely, and we are not doing the closed session tonight due to a scheduling issue and so we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all. Have a good night.